Thank you, Lyndon.
Much. I thought that was. Yeah, that's who gave it to us. Yeah, Merry Christmas, yours and yours. Yes. Have to give raises without fighting. Sir? None. None. Okay.
If you're willing and enabled, I'll ask as you consider standing for the invocation. Remain standing to the pledge, and we recognize the Pastor Paul Leslie of the McDonough Christian Church in McDonough, Georgia, Reverend.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for the privilege of gathering tonight. We pray that you would guide all the discussions that take place. Father, we ask for a blessing over those who serve in our armed forces all over the world that allow us the freedom and privilege to gather tonight. Father, we ask also a blessing over our public servants, those who run too danger. And tonight, God, would you grant wisdom to these leaders, to these commissioners who oversee the businesses and the business and the affairs of this county? God, grant them wisdom and discernment in all that they do. And Father, we thank you that Emmanuel, God is with us, especially this time of year. In your son's holy and precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I proudly give the flag of the United States of America to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with a purity and justice for all.
I'm showing 6:30 with the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 PM Tuesday, December 15th. Meeting come to order. If you'll notice on the agenda announcement, the following item was advertised but has been removed by the applicant and will not be heard. The applicant no longer wishes to rezone to this property. Public Chair in RZ 15-17, Janice Howell of McDonough, Georgia, requests rezoning from RA Residential Agriculture, R2 Single Family Residential to the property located on the south side of Snappy Shoals Road, Landlock 114 and 143, in the 8th District. Property consists of 36, 49, plus or minus acres, and request is for the development of single-family residential. So if you're here for that purpose, this will not be heard, and we've taken it off the agenda. Having said that, I would like to recommend the board add two items, amend the published agenda to add two items. One would be to add executive session, and as of right now, it would be limited to personnel matters. The second thing I'd like to add is a resolution to authorize the chairman to execute an engagement letter with the law firm of Ogletree, Deacon Nash, Smolt, and Stewart to help the board address some personnel issues that we have pending. And I would like to, obviously, the executive session goes to the end of the meeting. It would be after the January 19th meeting published. But I'd like to put the consideration for the resolution authorized when the chairman executes engagement to be placed under the county attorney's comments. So unless somebody else has a to amend it further, to delete, or to add something else.
Mr. Chairman, I think the manager wanted to present that item.
I'll take care of it, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll add anything or answer any questions that come up.
Okay, I'm gonna move my arrow, since it's right above you, from the county attorney to the county manager's comments. If somebody likes that, will somebody move to amend the agenda to add that?
Commit.
Have a motion District 1?
Second.
Second District 3, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during the portion of the meeting. All persons wish to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public speaker comment form, or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. Do we have any, Madam Clerk? Thank you. Next, we have a handout before you. We have two vacancies on the Henry County Board of Health. We have, reason we have two vacancies, one resigned and one term is getting ready to expire. I'll give you a handout. The chairman of the Henry County Board of Commissioners, which in this case would be me, is automatically by the Board of Health's bylaws, is automatic chairman of the Board of Health. So having said that, I would like for the board to consider approving a resolution of Henry County Board of Commissioners regarding the appointment of Henry County Board of Health, and appoint Dr. James Alexander to the Henry County Board of Health to serve on a term of six years ending December 31st, 2021. Dr. Alexander is on the board now, he's retired, and he's doing a good job, he enjoys it, and he's an asset to the board. So if somebody would consider moving for this resolution. Have a motion District 3? Second District 1, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you. The consent agenda, the following adjourned items shall be considered on the consent agenda. Before the board will vote on this consent agenda, they will have an opportunity to provide, an opportunity to add or delete the item. DUI Drug Court, resolution accepting supplementary grant in the amount of $13,500 from the State of Georgia Criminal Justice Coordination Council. The technical services, we have a resolution approving renewal of a docuWare electronic document management system. The county manager, we have an amended resolution of the Board of Commissioners regarding a lease agreement with the Georgia Department of Human Services, Division of Family and Children's Services. B is a resolution to counsel MOU dated July the, excuse me, 16th, 2013, and approve a new memorandum of agreement with the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission for the office space located at 505 Hampton Street. Another resolution to approve an lease amendment number five with the United States of America, OBO, the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA, in regards to a partial release of office space at 333 Phillips Drive, and authorizing the chairman to execute all the documents necessary. This ends the consent agenda. If somebody would move that we approve the consent agenda as I just read. We have a motion District 5? Second District 2, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move. That moves us down to Public Works, resolution to apply for a GO Transit Capital Program, GT, correction, GOTCP, with State Roads and Tollway Authority, SRTA presenter Terry McMichels, and also note presentation by Bert Bradley, the Deputy Executive Director of SRTA. So having said that, will you two, Bert, would you come up here, please?
Chairman, good afternoon, Chairman and Board members. It would probably be a little more appropriate if I let Bert give his presentation on the GO Transit Program. When he concludes, then I would present my resolution. I think that might explain it better, if we do it that way. So I'll kind of hold on that, turn it over to Bert, and then come back to the podium when Bert completes.
Mr. Chairman, Board, if you recall, I sent an email out to you last week regarding an opportunity of this grant being presented, and to have the representatives here to talk to you about it. All tonight, we're going to be asking is you authorize to put the application in. It does not bind you to the agreement, but everything we've seen about it and everything I know about it to this date tells us we need to make a mighty swing at it and go after it. After you have any presentation questions you have for the presenter, we'll make it clear again that we're just gonna put a draft proposal together, get it evaluated, and then send it off for application. Doesn't bind you to accept it, but we think it's a great deal, think it's a great opportunity for Henry County.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bradley.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good to see you. Always good to be with you. And I'll just quickly tell you that we're 40% done on the managed lanes project, or Georgia DOT is. They're doing a great job. I come through there a good bit, and every time I come through, there's something new that's been done. And so they're doing a really great job, we're excited. January 2017 is the opening for that, and we'll be back down to give you more updates on that later as we go through the process. But tonight, as Terry said, here to talk to you about the GO Transit Capital Program. You guys remember during the legislative session last year, there's a lot of talk about transportation funding, and the legislature ended up changing the way the gas tax is collected, and switched to a per gallon tax instead of a sales tax, and a lot of discussion around that. Something that didn't get as much attention is legislature also put in $75 million in the budget for transit needs statewide. And they put that money over at the State Road and Tollway Authority because we're able to grant money out in a way that's a little different than what GDOT is able to do. And so, of course, we work with them very closely in all that we do with state transportation. But this is a program that has come under us. We have teamed with Greta, who is the state's transit operator, and they're doing a great job of helping us design the program that will help transit operators. So I'm gonna quickly run through a presentation on the program, and then, as Terry said, I think you guys are gonna consider a resolution that Henry County may apply. We've been talking to the staff about some potential opportunities and projects that are here, and so. Can we just do it like that? Yeah, that's fine. I can just kind of hit that. Yep, okay. So it is a $75 million competitive funding program, again, for transit needs statewide. And the key component of this, it has to be a capital funding. Transit around the state are in dire need of operational funds, most transit systems are, and this program cannot help operational dollars, this can only help capital. So things like technology, maintenance facilities, buses that are more the coach style with a long useful life, any kind of property, anything that can help a transit system that has at least a 10-year useful life, and I'll get into that in a minute. And as I mentioned, the Certa Board will make the final awards, and Greta has helped us with designing the program. So here are the five main components of the program. Increasing economic competitiveness, strengthening access and connectivity to transit for our populations, improving mobility and system integration, maintaining and optimizing assets, and then improving safety. And so those are the categories with which we'll score all the applications that come in. There's a matrix that we've come up with with Greta's help, and all of them that come in will score. And again, it's a competitive process because we believe we'll have much more than $75 million in applications that come in. So eligible applicants are existing transit operators. So Henry County has a transit arm, and so Henry County is eligible. In addition to counties and cities that run transit, also CIDs in Atlanta that run transit operations, so any existing transit operator is eligible. And so we've been going to transit operators, meeting with them, meeting with staff, like I've been doing with Henry County, coming and talking to city councils and county commissions. This is really the key slide of the whole program here. Because the state sold bonds to fund this program, the state will pay for these bonds over the next 10 years. So any project must have a 10-year useful life. And most local transit service buses are only in use for three to five years because they get run so frequently and over so many miles, over so many hours each day. So it must have a 10-year useful life in order to meet the bond requirements. So that really limits the, it narrows the kind of projects that are eligible. Also, the Certa, or the State of Georgia, has to have an ownership interest. So if the state's gonna be paying off bonds for this project, the state actually has to own the project. So it's a little bit of a strange arrangement where we are coming to transit operators and say, please apply for funding that the state will purchase, the state will own it, and then in many cases, we will lease whatever that asset is back to the operator for them to use. And transit operators are used to this because some of their GDOT funding that comes through the rural transit program is very similar to this. So the state will hold the deed or the title, anything that is purchased through this program. So some eligible costs here, and we've, I don't want to read all these, too, you guys can read, but again, things like construction of new buildings, facilities, acquisition of land, any kind of a land purchase, again, that it will be an asset, anything that is sort of permanently attached or improvements. So again, it's just, if you think about a capital need that transit operators have, these are the kind of things that would be eligible. And so again, we've been, we're excited about the program, but it is a little bit narrower than I think a lot of the transit operators would like. They would like, very much like to have some help on their operational funds. But unfortunately, this is just not gonna be the program that's gonna, that's gonna help with that. Couple of things that we've also talked to the staff about, there's no match required from the applicant, but if you have a match, your application is much more competitive. So if you think about, as we get in all these applications from around the state, we'll score them based on some categories, and the level of match is one of those categories. So if you're able to put some match towards the project, that's gonna help your score and be more likely that you'll be able to get, to get funding. And so again, we've been, lots of talk, a lot of transit systems are struggling for funding, and they just don't have a lot of match to put in. So for those applicants that are able to put in match, it will be a real beneficial to their application. So this is the process, and what we're in now is where we're out talking to applicants, talking to them about their potential projects, walking through the potential pros and cons to their projects. It will, the applications will come in, they're due January 31st, and they'll come in to the State Road and Tollway Authority along with Greta. We will evaluate those based on the scoring criteria. There's an advisory panel that will meet, and these are people with statewide responsibilities, so people like ACCG and GMA, the Georgia Association of Regional Commissions, people with statewide responsibilities that don't have any conflict, but know the transit service and are able to evaluate the benefit of each application that comes in. This advisory panel will make a recommendation to the Certa Board, and the Certa Board will make the final recommendation, and then the Certa staff will then execute an agreement with each successful awardee on how that particular project is gonna get delivered. And again, with ultimate goal of helping the transit operator, but having some state ownership in whatever asset is purchased. And so again, well, this is sort of the way, some different options about how the funds can be distributed. Most of the transit operators that we're talking about, we will just probably direct pay. So in other words, the applicant will apply for funding, and then we will directly pay for whatever that asset is because the state is gonna own it. There are a number of other options as well. You can trade property easements, you can, there's a lot of different, the lawyers have gotten into this and have told us, have designed a number of different options. The most likely option would be the applicant tells us what they want to buy, and then the state buys it, and then we lease it back to the operator for them to actually operate during their life of the project. And that's more detail about some of the other options, which again are rare, and we're talking to your staff about those options and the different ideas that are coming up. So there's, we've got webpages and collateral material. We've been down to the Georgia Transit Association Conference, talked to them about, there's a lot of interest in the program around the state. Again, this is a sorely needed funding source for transit operators, and we've been out talking to really as many people as we could and done presentations just like this one this evening. So the timeline I mentioned earlier, January 31st is when the application window closes. We will review, have an internal review process from February to April, and then by summer of this year, we expect the Certa Board will actually approve the awards. And so that's really quick, and I know you guys have a long agenda, I didn't want to take up too much of your time, but I just tell you, from the state's perspective, we're really excited about, this is the first really heavy investment in transit in a number of years that the state has made. And it's very tailored and very narrow, as I mentioned earlier, but it's gonna be a very helpful process for transit operators to use to be able to get some of these capital needs funded and partner with the state to do that. And so I'm gonna turn it back over to Terry. I have Dave Castle from Greta is here. If you, as you have questions, one of us can certainly, if we don't know it, we'll make it up, and we'll get you the answer. But we've been doing this a lot, and we've got great questions, great projects around the state, and so we'll be able to take those questions, but I think Terry's gonna actually present the resolution at this point.
Chairman, Commissioners, Henry County Department of Transportation and Henry County Staff was made aware of funding opportunities from State Road and Tollway Authority for funding for capital-related public transportation needs in Georgia. During the 2015 legislation, the Georgia Assembly designated $75 million in general obligation bonds, funds for the GO Transit Program, and designated Certa to administer. Henry County is eligible to submit projects to this competitive funding program. Staff will follow the GOTCP requirements for eligible capital projects. Bert has already kind of shown those on the screen, and they're provided in your book. As he said earlier, this application will close on January 31st, 2016. So staff is seeking authorization to submit projects for the GO Capital Transit Program. Be happy to take any questions y'all may have, and we'll try our best to answer them.
Anybody have any questions? Are you on the floor? District 4?
Question I have, let's say we do the application, we score high, and we get the funding. How much input does Henry County have into the projects that we do? And are you picking over the projects that we submit on our application, or what, where are we at on that?
Right. So the county retains complete control in terms of what they submit. So we've been talking to the staff, there's a couple of different ideas that the staff has, and there's no requirement that you only submit one, you can submit more than one. Once those applications come in, the scoring will determine what gets funded, and we'll fund as much as we can with the available funding. Once we make the award, of course, we'll contact the awardees and tell them they've been awarded, and then we'll execute an agreement with the applicant that actually spells out exactly how it will work. So I think the county manager mentioned earlier, you, the county retains complete control about how this works until you sign the agreement, and then at that point, the agreement governs how it goes from there. But today, just, I think what you're considering is whether to apply or not. And it can be multiple projects. We actually encourage multiple projects to come in because they'll be scored independently, and you get more chance of winning, obviously. Buy more lottery tickets, you get a chance to win. So you, yeah, so that comes in, and then, but that negotiation of the agreement will then go forward on terms of how it will be delivered. And at any point, the county can say, you know what, we don't like this, you know, go give your money to somebody else, and we can do that. But I think, based on the conversation that we had, it's a mutually, we're not picking projects for you to apply for, but we'll score them and then pick the ones that get awarded.
Okay. Thank you.
District 3?
Bert, you mentioned earlier that we could put some matching funds up. Do we have to do that at the time we submit the application, or does that come in a later process?
So you just have to commit to the number, and most city councils and county commissions have passed resolutions or included in the budget, or submitted a letter, or they've done something to show a commitment to a number. You don't have to write the check out, because again, you really don't know at this point that you're awarded yet, but it's just, you just have to come to an agreement in terms of the number. And so whether that's a letter, or a vote, or just something that says this will be our commitment. But again, until the agreement's signed, you're not, you're not all the way in. It's just to give us an idea of what the number would be if you choose to do that, and make your application more competitive.
Some discussions already about what match could be. Certainly, it could be cash, but I would be looking for something a little bit more innovative. There are some possibilities, we can do some liking-kind things, some maintenances, or there are a number of flexibilities here to look at other than cash. It will probably be a blend of a couple of different things that make it enticing, but I don't want to not get there and get all the points that we capable of. We are actually, we knew at this time, we are gonna turn in two applications, this particular one, and Mr. Salters is gonna make a presentation at your first meeting in January about some other more specific transportation-related. We're gonna make a mighty swing at both of them, but to address your question about match, yes, it is, it has value to it, but it doesn't necessarily always have to be cash. I would be looking for those things that we could absorb and not hurt us in terms of a cash position much, but still meets the criteria of the grant, showing we're putting skin in the game, for lack of a better phrase.
Anybody else have any questions, District 5?
Do you have any thoughts on where we would like to see this money invested? Any thoughts on where we would like to see these dollars invested?
There are some, this particular notion is gonna be relative to taking advantage of when the managed lanes come in. And we're looking at a potential park-and-ride type facility that would come online, hopefully about the time that the managed lanes are established, and there's a, there's value to that in the grant on how it addresses transportation needs in Henry County and along the 75 corridor. Brett, is anything else you can throw at that?
And I just add that, you know, we, I think we've had discussions with not only you guys, but also City McDonough about the loss of the park-and-ride lot at Jodico because of the construction there and not having direct access into the managed lanes from there. So the county, and I'll just say, from Certa's perspective, the idea of a park-and-ride lot somewhere in the Jonesboro Road corridor that would have direct access to the managed lanes, that horseshoe entrance there, is very appealing, you know. Again, I'm not the one who scores the, but I'll just tell you, I know that we would view that very favorably, obviously, because losing the access to the Jodico area, not only for managed lanes, but also for people who meet there and ride places and all the different reasons that you have park-and-ride lots. But that would be something the state would value highly, a park-and-ride type facility that would have that real close access to managed lanes in the Jonesboro Road corridor.
Anybody else have any questions? District 1?
How you doing? Is there a limit to how much funding that one county can get?
There is. Half of the dollar, so to any one operator, there's a limit of half the money, so it's 37 and a half million. A lot of people asked about MARTA, and obviously, there's a lot of needs that MARTA has, and so we expect MARTA to ask, you know, for a good chunk of money, but there's a limit of half of the dollars available. So we want the money to go out and be spread out around the state and be used in very strategic and meaningful ways, and MARTA has needs, but there's also needs around the state. So that's where that half comes in. And so it's any one entity.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Let me ask you this. I would like for, once staff, before they authorize staff to submit the project, I would like for the board, each board member to have an opportunity to review the application before sent. Number two is, is it, does this require a, the chairman to execute any documents? Does it just go and sign? I notice in the, therefore, it doesn't indicate, allow the, it doesn't authorize the chair to execute the documents, so is that not needed?
I would think if we put some kind of incentive above a match, whether it be in kind services, or cash, or something like that, that is, as Bert said, we would require either a resolution or a letter from the chairman, so it would probably come back, I would think, before the board, you know, if something like that was putting, put in there.
There is no question it's gonna come back before the board. If I'm gonna use any resources as a match requirement, I'm gonna bring it back for y'all, specific authorization, I'll put a dollar amount to it and tell you what we're gonna be doing after we understand a little bit more about this. But I won't let it go, nor will I submit it unless I come back to y'all knowing exactly what I'm asking y'all to agree to, and y'all do it by specific vote.
If, in this project description, do we have to identify a geographical location when we make an application for the grant, or is that, we do?
No, well, I'd say as much detail, the more detailed, the better, but there's no reason to, for example, a park-and-ride lot, you know, there's reason to identify one parcel because you're not, we're not actually awarded the project yet. So if you were, would it be awarded for a project like that, then at that point, I think we would come back and we'd start to narrow down. I should say this, too, Greta has a park-and-ride strategy that they are, that actually has federal funding in that as well. And so if you, if the county were to go that direction, this would actually be the match, that would be the match for the federal grant that would come. And the federal program has a very specific way they go about acquiring land and building park-and-ride lots. So in this particular, in that particular case, there's a whole process that we go through, and I think you'd be fine in the application, just saying, we want it in this area, and then we can go through the whole process if awarded.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? If not, we have a resolution authorizing for staff to submit projects for the GO Transit Capital Program.
Capital Program. Somebody move in that direction. Have a motion from district three, second district five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The chairman will record that for the application that the board approved it by unanimous decision.
Grudge you that. Thank you. Resolution authorized to fiber optic relocation services on the Henry Parkway and Henry Parkway. Terry.
Thank you. Sir, the county received a transportation enhancement grant for sidewalks in a, along Henry Parkway and sidewalks along Henry Parkway connector. BTRU was awarded a construction bid through resolution 16 dash, through construction bid 16-10, resolution 15-302 on September 15th, 2015. Of course, as you can tell, the sidewalk's under construction now. In addition to the construction costs, Henry County will need to pay Comtech $15,300 for relocating the fiber optic cable that is in conflict with the installation of the sidewalk. So we are asking approval for, to award the relocation of the fiber optic to Comtech in the amount of $15,300. And this, there is funds in the DOT project budget for this account.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Yes, sir. District four.
Terry, I remember this bid quite well. The question I have, why wasn't this included in the bid from the contractor to do this? Why are we paying for this after the fact?
This is a utility and typically when we bid out the construction product, we don't put the relocation of utilities in the bid. That's usually something that the county pays. This fiber optic cable is a county fiber cable and we have an annual contract with Comtech, so it was part of ours to do. So rather than, if you put it in the contract, then the contractor is going to use whomever he desires to relocate that cable. If we pay for it, we're in control of who does it and how they do it and it's just more of a control-type issue. And since we had an annual contract with them, county-owned cable, we elected to make it separate, then have the contractor relocate the utility. Similar to our supply projects, I mean, like if there's a water line conflict, we don't pay the contractor to relocate the utilities. Instead, we get the cost up, you know, from the utility companies and award those ourselves to kind of be more control of the utility relocation.
I had just had concerns because the bid, I felt, was very high. This project's just, every time, it just keeps coming back, it's more and more. So I don't, we need to look at this in the future.
This, when we presented the award of the contract, we presented a budget and this was pretty close to what was in that budget amount for that item when we presented the Fiber optic is kind of an expensive process to fool with, but, so I guess it is what it is.
I yield the floor, district one.
Terry, isn't this project grant-funded?
I'm sorry?
It's grant, a grant-funded project, correct?
It is. It's grant-funded, but the grant was only, would pay up to $200,000. Anything over 200, it's the county's to pick up the additional cost. The bid was 292 something, 292,000 and something. So the county's paying the additional contract and the relocation of the fiber and any other costs that are above that. But the grant maxed out at 200, that's all they would pay.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else in the commission has any questions, comments? If, hearing none. Authorization of expenditures for the fiber optic relocation services at Henry County Parkway in the amount of $15,300. Does somebody move in that direction? Have a motion, district one. Second district five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution awarding a bid for guard rail repair at three locations in the amount of $15,510.69. Mr. McMichael.
From time to time, it's necessary to repair damaged guard rail throughout the county. Henry County DOT has assessed sites and has determined that the following areas are in need of repair. Oak Grove Road at Criddle Creek, South Bethany Road approximately 450 feet south of Philadelphia Drive, and Airline Road at Cotton Indian Creek. We put this out, we got one response, and that was, response was from Martin Robbins Fence Company for guard rail repair for the three locations in the amount of $15,510.69. They have done our repair in the past and we've been satisfied with their work. This seems to be about in line with what we're paying, so we recommend award to Martin Robbins Fence Company. I might add to this that on some of these, we are going back to the accident reports and the individuals that hit these locations and trying to seek reimbursement through that. Vincent is doing a good job on that, so we're trying to recoup some of these costs. Might answer any questions you may have on this.
How are these guard rails damaged?
Car accidents. Cars hit them, strike them.
Do we have any mechanism to where we can seek reimbursement for damage? Is that part of it? Because I know you got right here, 450 feet south of Philadelphia, so.
Vincent has started that process. I think he's on the way. He might be able to answer that better than I. This is something that I think Vincent started doing, trying to recoup some of these costs.
This is our risk management. The director. Yes, sir. Vince.
Good evening, board members. What I've been doing is, as we ride around the county and get with some of the DOT crews, you're able to get a good look at some of the things and find some locations where guard rails are located. Back on, we had this one time and point where Terry had a guy that was actually out on work, he was out on workers' comp and he needed a light duty assignment. During that time, he had a chance to do some guard rail, go out and do some guard rail inspections. So what I did, I kind of looked a little bit further into it and found that there are some, found that there are some insurance mechanisms, money that the insurance companies put aside to kind of come back and pay for some of these things as people are involved in these vehicle accidents. So we've been looking. It's a long and tedious process and no, there may not be millions that are recovered, but there are some small amounts that can be recovered.
In your professional opinion, how much you think we can recover out of $15,510.69?
We may be able to recover anywhere from five to 10% of that. It all, it just all depends on how long it took, if that money is still available. Sometimes, once the insurance company closes that case, or we have to sometimes go back and find that case. But calling, you know, calling on some other departments, i.e. the police department and working with their records department and just doing some of that.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? District three.
When there's an accident that occurs, it tears this guard rail up, do the police make notes of that and take pictures of it and document everything?
Well, they don't take pictures per se, but sometimes they do make certain notes in there that we can come, that way that gives us the evidence to kind of go forth and pursue that.
Anybody else have any questions? Not, we have a resolution in the book. The resolution of the board of commissioners awarding a bid for guard rail repairs. To approve. Have a motion, district three, second district five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Resolution authorized, the chairman has signed a new transportation enhancement MOU between Henry County and Georgia Department of Transportation for the Panola Mountain Greenway Trail Path. G dot PI number 0010721. Henry County presented. Terry.
Georgia Department of Transportation sent a request for the board to sign a new memorandum of understanding, or MOU, for the Panola Mountain Greenway Trail Path. As the MOU that was signed in January 2012 has to be updated. The update is required because the project did not meet a bid date, a successful bid date of August of 2014. As of October 31st, 2015, Georgia DOT has not received or approved all the preliminary engineering documents. The county is requesting, the department, Georgia DOT, is requesting county to sign a new MOU and validate a continued interest in completing this project. The new MOU contains a provision that the project be ready no later than June 30th, 2019, meaning this state will ensure the project is ready for FY 2020 funding. So we're requesting authorization for the chairman to sign this memorandum of understanding, just to get it updated. I might add, the current status of the project, the right-of-way plans were submitted, reviewed, had some comments turned back over to the consultant. The consultant has made those changes in the right-of-way plans and I think I received an email this week, is turning on back end, what we hope will be final approval on the right-of-way plan. So the project's still moving forward, it's going through the federal process, but it is still moving forward. This is just to get the memorandum of understanding updated, kind of secure that we still want the funding and the funding will be there. Be happy to answer you. Any questions you may have about the agreement or?
Anybody have any questions? Not, we have a resolution in the book, authorizing the chairman to sign a new transportation enhancement memorandum of understanding MOU between Henry County and Georgia Department of Transportation for the Panola Mountain Greenway Trail Path. G dot PL number 0010721, Henry County Project. Somebody move in that direction. Have a motion, district five, second district four. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you, chairman, board.
Terry, could I say something? I just wanted to congratulate you on your retirement.
In the December, and appreciate all your years of service here. I was here, I've here, I've been here three years and I've enjoyed working with you for all three of those years.
Thank you. This will be my season finale tonight, so thank you very much. I have enjoyed my tenure here and it's been a great place to work and I've enjoyed working with y'all and, you know, certainly do anything I can to help the county and continue the success that we're having. So thank you. I've enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nineteen years and seven months is how long the gentleman has served. Been a class act since I first started reading about him about three years ago. We have appointed Mr. Wade Stroud to fill in in the interim capacity on it and we're going to miss Terry. So thank you, Commissioner. That's perfect. Thank you. Next, we're going to have a public hearing and ordinance repeals, repealing section 2-2-33, county purchase bid, et cetera, general, and replace the same with a new purchase ordinance. Mr. Gray, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, commissioners, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's request is to repeal section 2-2-33, which is county purchases, bids, et cetera, generally of the code of Henry County, and replace this section with the attached purchasing ordinance. The existing code provides a very broad and general structure for Henry County centralized purchasing operations, but does not provide the required level of detail, the inclusion of available opportunities for the development of efficiencies, or the structured guidelines for ongoing compliance. The proposed purchasing ordinance was created by capturing the current policies, procedures, and accepted practices that are consistently carried out in the purchasing department with a few notable amendments, which are on the screen. The first would be that the sealed bid, the sealed bid proposal limit would be required for all purchases that equal or exceed $50,000. The Henry County Board of Commissioners approval limit would be for all purchases that equal or exceed $50,000. There is a provision that would allow compliant and eligible P-card purchases made for the single-source limit, which is $1,000. Annual contract purchases with the available budget that equal or exceed $50,000 would not require additional approval from the Henry County Board of Commissioners because the annual contract would have previously been approved by the Board of Commissioners as well as the line item budget for that purchase. And the final noticeable difference is that it incorporates the Henry First Initiative, which is a local purchasing initiative into the purchasing code. I'd like to thank the board for their thoughtful consideration related to this request and I stand ready to field any questions.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I've got one question.
Yes, sir. District three.
Ron, is this going to make it easier for our local vendors to be able to bid on projects?
I'm not sure how to define that. The opportunity, we feel, is there now. The Henry First Initiative is based on purchases that, for a local vendor that are within 5% of the low bid for all purchases, less than $100,000, it allows them to match the low bid price and receive an award if they're willing to do so. That is fairly forward-thinking. Not all counties use that type of initiative to support their local vendors. But as far as ease, no, it would be the same process because you have to award based on the low cost or the high score in an RFP process.
Anybody else got any comments or questions? If not, an amendment to, an ordinance of this nature requires two public hearings. We had the first public hearing and the first reading of this ordinance, December the first, at our last regular meeting. So having said that, I will open the floor up for 10 minutes if anybody would like to speak for or against this amendment to repealing section 2-2-33. So if you'd be kind enough to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and totally the group will have 10 minutes. I say again, this is a public hearing. Anybody that would like to be heard at this time, approach the podium. Not seeing or hearing any, I declare that the public hearing has met the requirements and we have a resolution of the board repealing section 2-2-33, county purchase bid, et cetera, generally of the Henry County Code, Henry County, Georgia, and replaces the same with a new purchase ordinance. If somebody would move to adopt this resolution. Okay, we have a motion from district four. Go ahead, second. Second district one, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, from the book of writing on the coattails of hard-working, good people, this has been a project that's been ongoing for about two years or a little bit more. So I want to thank Mr. Gray and staff for putting all of this together and finally getting something that's really going to stream like some of the work we're doing. So good job, Rob.
Thank you so much. I know when I came on board three years ago, it was a project in the making and it is so significant, it took three years to state a drill to get here, but now we're here. And I want to thank you for that and staff as well.
Yes.
Finance, resolution approving a defined benefit pension plan funding policy. Yes, sir. Mr. Alata.
Chairman, commissioners, at the December 16th, 2014 Board of Commissioner meeting, the board passed resolution 14-333 to establish a defined benefit pension plan funding policy that would maintain an annual plan contribution of no less than 8% of participants' compensation. After that meeting, had discussions with ACCG and it was determined that Henry County had not established a written funding policy for its Georgia Defined Benefit Plan for Henry County employees. The ACCG then recommended that a formal policy be written, approved and adopted by the board to include this resolution as mentioned. The overall purpose of the policy is to outline the principles that will guide the board, who sponsor the Henry County Defined Benefit Plan and the plan actuary, in making funding decisions about the plan in order to accumulate the funds needed to fulfill the plan's obligation for the participants and the beneficiaries. Have any questions? I'll.
If not, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners to approve a defined benefit pension plan funding policy as required and requested by ACCG. Somebody move, have a motion, district two, second district three. Any further discussion? All in favor of a motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you, Mr. Alata. We have a resolution for the termination of an agreement with Reveal Management Services for Dispatching and Scheduling Software and Temporary Renewal of an Agreement with Route Match. Mr. Salter, good evening.
Good evening, chairman and commissioners. In the resolution 15-235, July 15th, 2015, the Board of Commissioners In the Resolution 15-235, July 15th, 2015, the Board of Commissioners approved the award of RFP 15-31 for dispatching and scheduling software for the Transit Department to reveal services. The recommendation is to terminate the existing agreement with Reveal Management Services in order to correct a procedural error and maintain full compliance with the 5307 FTA grant funding requirements. Reveal Management Services remain in good standing with the Henry County and has been contacted related to the county's requirement to move forward in this manner. There is also a recommendation to approve a month-to-month agreement with the current vendor for these services, Route Match, until the RFP revised can be developed, completed, and presented to the Board of Commissioners as we recommend it award. Funding for these services is available in the Transit Department's budget.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Not, we have a resolution, the Board of Commissioners for the termination of an agreement with Reveal Management Services for Dispatching and Scheduling Software and the Temporary Renewal of an Agreement with Route Match, if somebody would move to approve. Have a motion from District Four. District, second from District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Let's move down to Splosh, resolution approving the proposal to furnish and install the used commercial fitness equipment at Mosley Park using Splosh Two Funds. Mr. Burke-Caufte, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The Splosh Department is requesting authorization to use Splosh Two Funds to purchase and install nine pieces of used commercial fitness equipment at Mosley Park. The attached proposal from All Sports Pro Power Swing of McDonough includes furnishing, installing, all the listed fitness equipment at Mosley Park in the amount of $17,100. Seven pieces of existing fitness equipment shall be declared to be of no further use to the county and may be used towards the trade-in of this purchase. Funds are available in the Splosh Two Mosley Park account, SPO 220.
Any comments or questions? Yes, sir, District Four.
Ron, I just want to say, thank you for getting this done, and I want my constituents to see, we priced these new, and the price came out to, right at $43,000, and we opted to go with used, and they're great pieces in great shape, and we ended up saving about $25,000 by doing this, and that's good government, that's good use of money, and I appreciate you following through with this and making this happen. I know that the equipment's looking kind of rough in Mosley, and I've had some complaints and getting some people pinched by the padding, but we're glad to see this coming in, so thanks for your assistance with this.
Any other comments or questions? If not, District Four, would you move to adopt this resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the proposal to furnish and install used commercial fitness equipment at Mosley Park using Splosh Two Funds?
Move to approve, Chairman.
Have a motion District Four, Second District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, have a resolution approving the budget amendment and award bidding for the construction of fire station number 14 in Locust Grove, Georgia, using Splosh, budgeted Splosh Four Funds. Mr. Burke-Caufte, good evening.
Yes, sir. Person in department solicited bids for the construction of fire station number 14 and posted bid number 16-32 on the websites of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, and ACCG slash GLGA. Perspective vendors were notified about the posting via the Team Georgia Marketplace and by email. Ten vendors submitted bids, the bid tabulations are attached to the resolution. The most responsive low bid came from Tommy Gibson Builders of Warner Robbins, Georgia, in the amount of $1,932,000. A budget amendment is necessary transferring $235,000 from Splosh Four Calendar Year 2018 State Road 155 Account to the Splosh Four Calendar Year 2016 Fire Station Number 14 Account, SP 4006. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book approving the budget amendment award a bid of construction of fire station number 14 in Locust Grove. Somebody move in that direction?
Move to approve.
District Two, moved, go ahead, second, Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. I might yield the floor to District Two, I think we've already approved a certain amount of personnel to start training to fill that station, is that correct?
Well, I mean, we're definitely, I mean, we're moving to get as many fire stations cranking as fast as possible for our citizens, since safety's one of our priorities, so we're working through it, and Brad, he can help answer that if we have any additional questions.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. We have started the process, the hiring process, January 6th, the recruit class starts for that station. These new employees will not be all there, they'll be distributed throughout the county, you know, even at the experienced levels, but we have started a process, looking forward to getting that station open somewhere towards the end of fall next year. Definitely outcry in the community for that underserved area has been greatly heard by the citizens, we hear them every week, somebody's giving us a call for that, and they're very excited to get their fire station in that community.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
We have a resolution approving the budget amendment and awarding bid for the construction of the Hampton Senior Recreation Center in Hampton using budgeted Splosh Four Funds. I'm sorry.
I was just going to, because I was just going to throw in, because you asked me about the staffing, I just wanted to say, kind of as a lead-in before, kind of set the stage, because this is decades in the making, Chairman, this whole senior center, and then the fire stations too.
I yield the floor back to District Two.
So I feel like we just need to add some grandeur to this announcement that's coming to us, because, I mean, Brad came up about the fire stations, I mean, one of the things, and Ron, I was going to totally hit you up on this, we have, for months, Fred's sitting out in the audience, and he sends us update emails every month on where's Splosh, and we've been doing good with collecting, but things have taken longer trying to get it all, and it's no problem, but it is an exciting month, and since it's December, it's Christmas. I think it's a Christmas miracle, and I'm so excited, and I hope, I can't tell if Fred's excited that we're about to unload all this money, or if it's, he's got smiles, but fire stations in my district, I was very excited about, and now I feel like we ought to have a drum roll, Ron is going to be talking about the senior center. I'm sorry, thank you, Brad, for coming up. Sorry, Chairman, I just, I get excited.
I yield the floor to District One.
Ron, how you doing tonight? Excuse me, is this fire station 14 the exact same footprint as station two?
Yes, sir.
When, Commissioner, if you remember, when I had come to the board on the design for the fire stations, for the four stations that we're going to be building, the station two replacement plus the three news, if you remember from that meeting, on purpose, we decided not to reinvent the wheel every time we built a fire station, so with other, little tweaks, okay, I mean, some things you're going to see different, it'll be the facade, okay, might be a different brick color on this one versus the other one, but they're basically all the same fire stations.
That leads up to my question. They're going to build this one for 1.9 million, roughly? 1.9 million?
For the construction part, yes, sir.
Okay. And mine was 2.2, in station two?
Was, station two was a million 665, for station two, for the building itself, okay, which did not include the site work that I'm talking with the, or negotiating with the city of Locust Grove right now for.
Okay, so this 1.9 don't include the site work, is that correct?
This 1.9 does include the site work on this, this is a total station.
Okay.
Site work, civil, the building, landscaping, everything.
Well, I thought we discussed that the total down at station two would be 2.2 million for everything.
It, for the total, there's more numbers, there's more involved in the project than just the construction, there's FFNE, we have to buy the beds, and we have to buy the desks and the computers and the, and Commissioner, I'll share the numbers, I'll share my budget with you after the meeting or tomorrow, and I'll let you know exactly where we are with station number two.
Yeah, okay.
For total.
That worked, thank you.
Okay, that works for him. Anybody else have any comments on the fire station number 14? I yield the floor to District...
Okay, well, before we give you your senior center, I...
I yield the floor to District Four for comment.
Where are we at on our Kellytown Fire Station?
Kellytown Fire Station is, I want to say, two weeks away from final approval, and it'll be ready for bid.
Has it been submitted, so it has been submitted?
Oh, absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, so we're getting ready to...
We, we're addressing red line comments as we speak.
Good, good.
It has been submitted, again, we're addressing the comments and sending it back, but it's very, very close.
Good, okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments on the fire station number 14? Okay, let's move down to the Hampton Senior Center.
Senior slash rec...
Senior.
Senior Slant Rec Center.
Yes, sir.
I read that in the beginning.
Well, we got Tim out there, we got to make sure.
Person in department solicited bids for the construction of the Hampton Senior Rec Center and posted bid number 16-35 on the websites of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, and ACCG GLGA. Perspective vendors were notified about the posting via the Team Georgia Marketplace and by email. Seven vendors submitted bids, the bid tabulations are attached to the resolution. Splosh Department recommends awarding the base bid as well as alternate number one for metal roofing in lieu of asphalt shingles at the Hampton Senior Recreation Center in Hampton, Georgia. The most responsive low bid came from Medja Construction of Peachtree City, Georgia, in the amount of $3,293,000, which is the base bid plus the $150,000 for the alternate. A budget amendment is necessary transferring $500,000 from Splosh Four Calendar Year 2018 SR 155 Account to the Splosh Four Calendar Year 2016 Senior Rec Center Account, SP 4202. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any comments? Questions?
I'm just excited, so I'll make a move, I'll move to approve, and it's been a lot of years, and Chairman, I appreciate your efforts also on helping us secure the building site.
Thank you so much. We have a resolution, I have a motion to the resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners approving the budget amendment and awarding a bid for construction of Hampton Senior Recreation Center in Hampton, Georgia.
Second.
That was Second District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Anybody want to make a comment about the center before we move on? Resolution awarding a bid for construction to the Fairview Community Park in Ellwood, Georgia, using budgeted Splosh Four Funds. Mr. Burke-Caufte.
Yes, sir. The person in department solicited bids for the construction of the Fairview Community Park and posted bid number 16-34 on the website of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, and ACCG slash GLGA. Perspective vendors were notified about the posting via the Team Georgia Marketplace and by email. Four vendors submitted bids, and the bid tabulations are attached to the resolution. The most responsive low base bid from Sunbelt Builders of Covington, Georgia, in the amount of $4,096,362. A budget amendment is necessary transferring $2 million from the Splosh Four Police Station Account to the Splosh Four Fairview Community Park Account, SP 4501.
Anybody have any questions or comment? Yes, sir, District Five.
Excited as well, it's definitely Christmas. I think this is going to be a wonderful asset, not just for the northern end of the county, but for the entire county. Thanks so much for all your work on this.
Anybody else have any comments? If not, we have a resolution in the book, Henry County Board of Commissioners approving a budget amendment and awarding a bid for the construction of the Fairview Community Park in Ellwood using Splosh Four Funds. I have a motion from District Five. Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution awarding bid to purchase four new emergency medical vehicle budget Splosh Four Funds.
Yes, sir, the Splosh Department is requesting authorization to use Splosh Four Funds to purchase four new emergency medical vehicles on behalf of the Henry County Fire Department. Person in department solicited bids to purchase the four new emergency medical vehicles and posted bid number 16-26 on the websites of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, and the ACCG GLGA. Perspective vendors were notified about the posting via the Team Georgia Marketplace and by email. The one responsive bid came from Custom Truck and Body Works of Woodbury, Georgia, in the amount of $657,920, attached is the price sheet or the bid tab for that particular bid. Funds are available in the Splosh Four Calendar Year 2015 ambulance account in the amount of $164,480, and the fire station's capital equipment account, SP 4005, in the amount of $493,440. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions or comments? District Four.
Ron, what's the build time on these?
If I'm not mistaken, it's two months or two and a half months for the chassis. If you look in, if you look at the bid tab, Commissioner, once they secure the chassis, vehicle number one is 120 to 150 days after the chassis, and vehicles one, two, three, and four after that, so you can get a timeline on when they'll be available. Securing the chassis is the most important part. Again, they buy the chassis, the truck, the chassis, and then they build the box and put the box on them.
The reason I ask this, we did have our K-9 vehicles were going down to be outfitted, and it took nine weeks to get about a week worth of work done, so I just want to make sure that there's some kind of time constraint on these. Do we have any control over the chassis, when we can get those, or when they can get those in? Because what I don't want to be doing is, and for Commissioner Preston and the other Commissioners, we don't want new fire stations opening without vehicles in them.
I understand.
So, do we have any input into the chassis? Do we know whether they're in back order, what, because I don't want to hear in, you know, a year from now, well, we can't get the chassis. So where, do we know where we're at on that?
Commissioner, unless Brad has some information on the chassis, I do not know the answer to that, no, sir, but...
Because Chief, are they just...
Yes.
Specific 550 chassis?
Commissioner Chris, there are Dodge 4500, our standard ambulance chassis. There's a cutoff on December 21st, that's why it's imperative we get this approved tonight or get this on the books. The chassis have been, basically, will be ordered after tonight, and the PO is set. They'll look for any circumstances, any delays in chassis, other than the two months. Ambulance chassis are built for ambulances, and they're ordered as they're needed, they don't, they're not really stocked and at the lot, so they'll be placed in order about two months to get them into the factory. They are turnkey, so when the ambulance has come, they're already lighted, they're ready to put in service and stocked for inspection, so we don't foresee any delay. This is a vendor we've used for many years now, and so we feel comfortable that they will meet the goal.
Good, all right. Any further comments or questions? Not, we have a resolution, Board of Commissioners awarding a bid to purchase four new emergency medical vehicles using budgeted Splosh Four Funds. Move to approve. Have a motion from District Three, Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. You can order the chassis now.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, if I may...
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Terry McMichael for the help that he's given me since I've been here. I know that I'm speaking for myself, but I think I'm speaking for a lot of the employees here at the county, and again, I just, I want to thank for his wisdom, being a Georgia Tech graduate and tutoring me, and I do appreciate his help, thank you.
Next, we're going to have a public hearing, RZ 15-18, James A. Brooks Junior, Jonesville, Georgia, requests rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to R4 Single Family Resident for a property located at 337 East Lake Road in Land Lot 7 of the 7th District. The property consists of 41.96 plus minus acres, and the request is for a residential subdivision of District Four. President Dante Gibbs, planning zone and director. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from RA Residential Agricultural, excuse me, to R4 Single Family Residence for the purpose of a single-family residential subdivision. The proposed development consists of 72 lots with a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet on public sewer, and with a net density of 2.18 dwelling units per acre. The request to develop an R4 Single Family Residential Subdivision is consistent with the future land use map, which designates the subject property for low-density residential land uses within an activity center. The school node activity center in which the proposed development is located sets the average density at three dwelling units per acre. The subject property is located within the East Lake Elementary and Union Grove Middle and High Schools School Node Activity Center, and according to Table 9.0102, a school node ideally has 1,500 dwelling units within an activity center comprised of 1,000 acres, 50% of which are residential acres for a gross... fifty percent of which are residential acres for a gross density of three point oh dwelling units per acre. The school node activity center has nine hundred and thirty-three acres, which would require one thousand four hundred houses. Approximately forty-one percent of the acre, of the acreage, three hundred and eighty-two acres, is residential, is residential with only a hundred and thirty-six houses and subdivision lots for a gross density currently of zero point three six dwelling units per acre. This means that there is a significant deficit of one thousand two hundred and sixty-four housing units, the greatest number possible of which should be located within comfortable walking distance of the schools according to Section nine oh one oh two dot three of ULDC. A comfortable walking distance could be defined as one quarter mile, which is approximately one hundred, one thousand three hundred and twenty feet. Uh, a majority of the subject property is located within a quarter mile of the entrances of the schools and would be appropriate to help alleviate the school node's deficit of one thousand two hundred and sixty-four housing units. Planning and zoning to staff took to the zoning advisory board on November twelfth, twenty fifteen, a recommendation of approval with eleven conditions, of which the applicant is agreeable. Eleven conditions included were not limited to a minimum heated floor space for each home of two thousand five hundred square feet, sided yards to the rear drip lines, homes consisting of all sides, brick, stone, stucco, or any combination of two or more of the following materials on all sides, which are brick, stone, stucco, or cement fiberboard, side entry garages were feasible, and the developer-owner coordinating with Henry County DOT and/or Splos to provide a minimum ten-foot-wide multi-use path along East Lake Road between the entrance of the subdivision and East Lake Elementary. With that said, the zoning advisory board recommended denial. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions for staff? If not, uh, would the applicant please come forward, and you have ten minutes if you'd like to make a statement or present something? Uh, state your name and, uh, address for the records, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. My name is Robbie Moore, and I represent the Smith family, as well as Mr. Jim Brooks. Jim Brooks had surgery and cannot be with us this evening. As the, uh, as the staff had recommend, uh, this piece of property has been owned by the Smith family. They purchased this property in nineteen forty-nine. They've owned this property since that time. They've paid taxes on this property since this time, and as, when they originally bought this, uh, Todd, one of the grandsons, is gonna come up here tonight and speak on this. Talks about, uh, when his grandfather was there and how, how much the area was rural, but the area has grown. It's not the, uh, the, the, uh, land that it was when they first bought it. There's been subdivisions added, there's been schools added. The unique thing about this piece of property is, is in Henry County, other than, uh, Jonesboro Road, when you get off seventy-five South on Jonesboro Road, if you turn east of the city of McDonough, you have a four-lane parkway. If you come down to the next, uh, a next exit to eighty-one twenty, and you turn right to the west headed over toward Hampton, you have Highway twenty, which is a four-lane parkway. The, the great thing about this piece of property is, is you'll see, this is the, uh, subject property right here, uh, Commissioners, and right here is where the, uh, East Lake Parkway and Igus Landing Parkway start. So we're less than one-half mile from a four-lane, four-lane highway, which would be able to handle, um, handle this traffic. There's so many, uh, state roads in this county, Highway eighty-one, Highway forty-two, Highway one thirty-eight, um, that, that are two-lane and have just thousands of houses on it, so, so this has a unique, uh, situation in the fact that we're less than one-half mile from a four-lane parkway. Also, as the staff, uh, as the staff had recommended approval on this before, um, before we, uh, presented this, this zoning case to you tonight, we met with the staff. We wanted to be friendly to the neighborhood, we wanted to be friendly to the county, we wanted to build a product that you would be proud of, a product that we would be proud of, and, uh, after going through the zoning, we came in and, as he has stated earlier in the presentation from the county, that the, your own land use map calls for twelve, three dwelling units per acre. We're only asking for two dwelling units per acre. So, it also talks about how, um, how close we are to the schools. The good thing about this, there's always the, uh, the concern of, of traffic, there's always the concern of overcrowded schools. The one unique situation about this is, you have all three schools here. You have an elementary school, which is adjacent to the property right here. You have the middle school, which sits here, and you have the high school that sits here. So there won't be an additional burden other than the classrooms on the school as far as providing transportation for these, uh, for the children. You won't have to have the buses that you have to have to transport them. So we feel like it's a minimal impact on the school system there. There are twelve stipulations that staff had recommended on these. We're more than happy to meet, uh, those twelve stipulations. Uh, the twelve stipulations, uh, I think are presented in your package there. Some of the things that I would like to point out there is the minimum of twenty-five hundred square foot of the all, uh, brick, stone, or masonry homes, um, the sided yards, and, um, these houses, we're talking about a price point of three hundred thousand dollars and up. And, um, you, uh, Board of Commissioners, have a unique situation that for the last five to six years, there have not been many developments because of the economy. The, um, the how, the, uh, there were plenty of lots left, and we're in the situation now, with this, uh, with the approval of this zoning, we're still twelve to eighteen months away from having lots ready. So, the lots are being eaten up, they're, uh, what better position to be in than you, Board of Commissioners, to approve and be able to say, hey, we approved three hundred thousand dollar-plus all-brick homes, and, uh, we're able to, uh, to help with the quality there. The, um, what I would like to do, Mr. Chairman, if I may, is I could, uh, it looks like I have another five minutes, I'd like to save my rebuttal for, uh, comments after, after four and oppose to that, if that would...
Anybody object to giving them five minutes extra? Anybody object? No objection? Okay, so you're gonna reserve five minutes?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, well, you got five minutes now, you got?
Yes, sir, I wanted, I wanted to reserve this five minutes after to, to, uh, to answer any...
You're gonna reserve this, I'm gonna let you reserve five minutes, that's what, so we, we won't have to, you don't want five additional minutes?
No, sir, I don't need five. I just wanna, there's four minutes left on my time, and I would like to reserve that to, to make any comments for any four and oppose.
Now, people speaking for it would be coming under the same timeframe for the ten minutes.
Under this, under, okay. All right, well, then there's a couple folks here that I would like to yield some time to, if I may.
Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start this back. Okay, if you would, come to the podium, state your name.
Yes, sir, my name is Todd Patrick. I'm one of the family members that owns the property. They've asked me to come, basically, just, we've owned the property since before I was born. The areas changed quite a bit in the last sixty-five years. If you look at this property here, we're here. The church was added beside us and then expanded beyond that. The subdivision behind us was added, and the three schools were added. We did not object to anyone making these changes, making these additions, because progress is inevitable, it's going to happen. We just basically liked the same consideration shown to us that was shown, we showed to everyone else. We're not land speculators, we didn't buy the land to hold on to it and sell it and flip it. The growth of the county just caught up with us. I, we reviewed the land use map, we've had a lot of people approach us over the years. This was the most attractive proposal as far as what they wanted to build. Uh, it fits all the land uses, it fits the neighborhood, um, and it's gonna help the tax base. So, I don't know if you guys have any questions for me, but...
Anybody got any questions for that? Okay. Okay, I recognize, uh, anybody that'd like to be heard in, in favor of this. Ioanna.
Steve Cash, Executive Director for the Henry Council for Quarter Grove, a lifelong citizen of Henry County, and, uh, I live at twenty-twenty-four Flat Rock Road in Stockbridge. The council is delighted to support such a project, not, not only the project, but the concept of the school node. A school node is very important. Uh, the county paid a lot of money at a time to consultants and had many public meetings on what would define a school node, so here we are tonight. We are, we're delighted in this project that sits before you tonight, and, uh, this is gonna bring a real sense to the community in the Union Grove. While it surpasses all standards set forth in the land use plan, it surpasses the standards set forth in the school node. And one step further, it surpasses standards and qualifications set by the board, known by past zonings and rezonings. The twenty-five hundred square foot. All sides, brick, stone, stucco. Two units per acre instead of three. The, the, the subdivision will experience far less vehicle travel because of the children, the kids, the teenagers walking to schools. You don't see that in too many places. They're walking to schools, walking to there and from there, and you have families and children walking to the great thriving church next door. That's far less vehicle trips that perhaps has been, uh, uh, stated at a previous time. I'd be proud to live in this community if I wasn't in a point in my life where I'm downsizing, but we'll say that to another time. Finally, I'm proud to have a landowner, a developer, our exceptional planning team, to go forward on such a development. And I believe, I, I, I believe it would be a shame, a shame that this is denied tonight. Yes, probably been four or five citizens to come up and, and say, not in my backyard, but I venture to ask those, each one of them, what backyard are you living in? I thank you, Mr. Chair. I thank you, fellow Commissioners, for a positive, positive vote tonight, which would be a good thing for Henry County, for change. Thank you so much.
Anybody like to be heard at this time? Yes, sir.
One, one last thing here, it won't take me long. Uh, I've also, uh, given, uh, the staff attorney, Mr. Patrick Jogstetter, I wanted to let you know that I did give him a letter of constitutional notice on this piece of property, uh, before a decision is made on that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Anybody else like to be heard in for, for this? Now, I'm gonna continue the public hearing, and I'm gonna reset the clock for ten minutes. I will open the floor now for anyone that opposes this, uh, proposed rezoning, and if you would, come to the podium, state your name and, uh, address for the record, and the group would have, uh, ten minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I would like to say, I, Reed Bowman, twenty-three hundred Airline Road, McDonough, Georgia, uh, the air conditioning's working great in here, just wanna let you know. But, uh, I have been asked to speak for several dozen, I, I don't know the exact number, but, uh, of people in reference to this particular rezoning. And I would like to say and make it clear for the record that they are not opposed to development of this property. They're not opposed to it at all. But that what they would like to see is development more in line with what is around the property. Uh, contiguous with the property, East Lake Estates, Smithville Estates, some of the others. And so I'd like to take this opportunity to ask the board, uh, if they would uphold the zoning advisory board's denial of this, of this proposed rezoning, and I thank you for your time and your consideration. Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to be heard at this time to oppose? I'll state against the public hearing. Anybody like to be heard at this time to oppose? Seeing none, hearing none, I'm gonna declare that the, uh, public session for this rezoning fifteen dash eighteen has, uh, the requirements has been met, so if applicant and the, uh, staff will come back. Does the board have any questions or comments for staff or the applicant? Uh, without any objection, we'll give you a couple minutes for a rebuttal.
In all due respect to Mr. Bowman, he's a, uh, he's a fine gentleman, and, and we agree with him. Smithfield Estates and East Lake Estates, Smithfield Estates is this subdivision right here. The average price in this, Smithfield Estates is less than two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Those are not all brick homes. It's a very nice subdivision, it's been a very added, uh, point to East Lake Road. This subdivision right here is, uh, is an all-brick subdivision, it's a very nice subdivision. Those homes there start around the, uh, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar, uh, um, price point and go up from there. So I do think that we are adding, we've said that, that our price point is three hundred thousand dollars and up, all brick homes, and I do think this right here is a, uh, is a track builder, and we're talking about custom-built homes on this piece of property, so yes, we would be very, very proud of our product, we'd be very proud to be on the East Lake side and be in the, uh, Union Grove School District. It's a wonderful school, and it's very, uh, it's one of the most sought-after schools in the county, so yes, we agree that we would like to, uh, to be equal to those, if not better than those. Thank you very much.
We have, uh, resolutions in the book, one denying it, and one could approve it if so be it, so this is in District Four, I yield the floor to District Four.
I have some statements here. I am very concerned that a developer would think that this is what the product we like to see in Kellytown. Kellytown has been historically an area with larger lots, it's state lots, and I, I'm gonna describe it as more country. And that's the way Kellytown's always been, and that's the way Kellytown's gonna stay. And I, I do hear what the developer's saying, um, and I do wanna tell the developer, you can build a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house on an acre lot as well. That being said, I'm gonna recommend denial of this zoning.
We have a motion on the floor, a resolution denying the rezoning request by James A. Brooks Junior for a property located at three-three-seven East Lake Road and land lot, uh, number seven of the Seventh District, consisting of forty-one point nine six acres plus or minus, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, District Two, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, so move. Thank you so much. Next, we have public hearing, RZ fifteen dash nineteen, LFW West Ridge LLC, Peachtree Corner, Georgia. Request rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to M one Light Manufacturing for the property located at seven-three-eight Ferris Drive and Land Lot one ninety-three of the Seventh District. Property consists of four point one six plus or minus acres, and request is for a industrial distribution facility, District Two. Dante, good evening.
I believe that I have a, uh, apparent conflict of interest. I actually performed the survey for this property, and as I understand it, there's several reasons I can recuse myself, but I believe county codes do say if I have the, um, what is it, the?
The, the county ordinance on, uh, on recusal says that if there are facts or circumstances that a reasonable person would conclude hinders your ability to be objection, objection, objective when you review this, it'd be proper to recuse, and if you prepared surveys for this property and were paid a fee, I would suggest that that probably is the type of matter that would justify you to recuse yourself.
Okay, for that reason, I'm gonna recuse myself, because I did perform work, and it is in this package, and, um, I think it falls underneath the county code, so...
This is directed at District Four, Commissioner, recusing, and, and...
You're right. Dante.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from RA Residential Agricultural to M one Light Manufacturing, with the intention to consolidate four point one six eight plus or minus acres with the surrounding thirty-one point eight plus or minus acres already zoned M one, in order to develop an industrial warehouse distribution space for a large industrial user. The applicant is also proposing the abandonment of Ferris Drive in order to develop the proposed industrial warehouse distribution space. The proposed abandonment of Ferris Drive must be approved by the Board of Commissioners through Henry County DOT. A portion of the property is located within the Indian Creek Long Branch Reservoir, a watershed area, and must meet the guidelines for limited development area set forth by the Henry County Watershed Protection Ordinances in Section three oh four oh oh of the ULDC. The future land use map designates the subject property as high-density residential, which is inconsistent with the proposed M one zoning, however, the requested zoning would be consistent with the future development of the surrounding M... of the surrounding M1 zoning properties, which were approved as part of the West Ridge Plan Development. Planning and zoning staff took to the zoning advisory board on November 12, 2015, a recommendation of approval with seven conditions. With that said, tonight, I present to the Board of Commissioners the zoning advisory board's recommendation of approval with the same seven staff conditions.
Anybody have any questions for staff? If not, I'd like to ask applicant to come forward and make a presentation if you so desire. You have 10 minutes. Good evening, Your Honor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and gentlemen. The staff has done a good job putting this together and I won't waste your time going over the same thing, except to say that this house and few acres is enveloped by M1 zoning. And I thought I might be able to add one thing that would be helpful to you. The reason that that few acres out there is zoned RA is that originally, that 700 acres that the West Ridge development came from was owned by a lady named Ethelyn Ferris. And she had no children and a deceased husband. And there was a man named Willie Robert Elliott who had been her driver and looked after her and kept her place for, over the years. And in her will, she left this acreage to him. And that's why there's a house and an RA zoning in the middle of this place. Mr. Elliott is given a statement that's attached to the application that I'm also representing him, in addition to my client, in requesting that this be rezoned. It's 4.168 acres, I think it is. It's right in the middle of a larger tract that's already zoned M1. And so I think that it is logical and certainly good for my client that wants to develop the warehouse there. And also good for the landowner, Mr. Elliott, if this would be approved so that it can proceed. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? If not, does anybody, like, this is a public hearing. Does anybody like to approach the bench to speak in favor of this project? If not, I'll let council reserve eight minutes for rebuttal if necessary. At this time, I'll recognize anyone that'd like to come up and speak against this proposal. You'll have 10 minutes. Approach the podium and give your name and address. I say again, if anybody is opposed to this, approach the podium and you'll have 10 minutes. Not seeing or hearing anybody approach the podium, I determine and declare that the public hearing has been satisfied. If applicant would return, please. It appears that the planning and zoning board has recommended approval with seven conditions. In the event the board moves in this direction, are you, is your client amenable to accepting these seven conditions?
Yes, sir.
Having said that, we'll link us to the floor to somebody to consider a resolution approving the rezoning request by LFW West Ridge LLC for property located at 738 Ferris Drive and Land Lot 193 of the 7th District, consisting of 4.16 acres plus or minus.
Move to approve with the seven items.
Have a motion, District 2.
Second.
Second, District 3. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
Thank you.
Thank you. Approval in a minute. November the 17th, 200, correction, 2015. Does somebody move? We accept and this published. Have a motion, District 3.
Second.
Second, District 1. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner, Chairman, comments? What I would like to do, starting, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. I'd like to wish staff Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And having said that, we've got something coming out on the, on the video and be airing off and on between now and first of year. And this got this group wishing you Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And just to say that, it only took us three or four times to get it right, so... Having said that, I yield the floor to District 4.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I just want to tell everybody, it's my first full year up here and I've enjoyed my time. I appreciate all the support and all the help I've gotten from staff and from all my citizens and I made a lot of good friends. And I enjoy representing you and look forward to next year. Merry Christmas and have a good New Year. We'll see you next year.
Let me link you to the floor to District 1.
I would just like to say I wish a Happy New Year and a Merry Christmas to our staff and to our citizens. And if you'd also keep in your prayers and your thoughts our men and women in our armed services that will not have opportunity to be with their family during the holidays like we're fortunate enough to be, Merry Christmas.
I yield the floor to District 3.
I'd also like to wish a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to all our employees and all the citizens of Henry County, from myself and my wife Becky. And I also want to congratulate Terry McMichael on his retirement and also Bill Lacy. He's retiring too, so that's it, Chairman.
District 2 is going to continue with the fire station in District 2.
I should.
Also, the senior recreation center. So I yield the floor to District 2.
And I definitely think this has been a joyous meeting tonight because a lot of stuff got accomplished. But, and Terry, I like watching you squirm. I can tell you don't like being the center of attention, so it's kind of fun watching you as your season finale, as you put it. And I can still remember, I'm wrapping up close to four years now on here and I got to fortunately work with Terry also when I was on the Board of Education, you know, because there's a lot of road projects. Terry's a great guy, always. I remember when I first started working here, he talked about his plan to retire at some point. And he talked about his family, travel and other things. And it's kind of crazy how fast it's all gone. And I just want you to know how much we've enjoyed working with you. Bill Lacy's also the same way. I know he's retiring. I know his wife through some leadership training and he's going to have an incredible retirement. I appreciate his service that he's provided. And then the last thing is just to our citizens. I mean, my wife was reading something to me about, you know, we all get caught up nowadays with the holidays where it seems like, you know, how fast can I get to Target? How fast can I get the gifts? Take in, there's a reason when you see, you know, stuff in the yards and decorations, you see peace in a lot of times, is that this is the time of year to really take kind of inventory of what the reason for the season is and the peace that comes from you from just the spiritual side of it. And it's just, we're all very blessed and I would just encourage everybody just to kind of remember the reason for the season.
Thank you. I yield the floor to District 5.
Well, I echo everything Commissioner Tu just mentioned. I also want to say congratulations to Terry. He's been a great employee for Henry County. I've learned a whole lot from you over the last five or six years. I work with a great group of commissioners and I think we're a great team. We have our ups and downs. However, I think we all work well together and I wouldn't trade this experience for the world. So Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy New Year.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to recognize the county manager and he's going to present to us a resolution authorizing the chairman to sign an engagement letter with the law firm of Oakwood Street, Deacon Nash, Smoot and Stewart.
Commissioners, at your last meeting, you authorized us to pursue outside counsel to assist with some work that I'm falling behind in, in personnel issues in HR department. I did reach out with consultation of county attorney and we arrived at something that I think will work for us. I reached out to a particular firm and spoke to this attorney. And their group has a unique practice in that they offer a lot of things that we're going to need, other than just the counseling of the issues I have immediately before me. But they also do a lot of coaching and education in terms of realigning what the functions of personnel should be. And I believe I need that in the organization. That was the reason I asked for this outside counsel.
Okay. Does somebody adopt a resolution authorizing the chairman to sign an engagement letter with the law firm of Oakwood Street, Deacon Nash, Smoot and Stewart? Have a motion, District 3. Second, from District 1, discussion? The only discussion I have is, before I execute this, I'm going to let all the board members have a copy of it and give them the courtesy of reviewing it before I sign it. So having said that, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. And I'll, yes, okay. I'll tag basically before I sign it. So we'll get him one tomorrow, too. You have any additional comments you'd like to make?
I do.
Okay, Your Honor, pick this up and hold it there. Nice kid.
Board, if you'll, I left an article in a newspaper that Mr. Purvis brought in, the facility maintenance. And if you'll take a look at that, it struck us is that, the article's about Fulton County. And if you just substituted and changed the numbers, it was the exact same conversations we've had recently about Henry County and the facility maintenance and the deference that has been occurring relative to structures or really everything that local government's been doing. But he brought that in and it sure is timely on the work that we've just started off on, trying to catch up on some of the facility maintenance construction. My next item is that I've certainly got to congratulate our own Jolly Elf, Mr. Tim Coley, Parks and Rec. He had an outstanding event at Heritage Park this week, this weekend. An estimated 3,500, 4,000 people showed up. It was a personal best, he said. Happened to catch his staff working on Thursday when we started the tour and it was so neat to see staff working in the woods. Little elves are putting the things together for the event. Well attended, excellent event, great entertainment, a lot of smiles. Very special event and I hope we can continue that in future. But my hat's off to Mr. Coley and staff at Parks and Rec for a job well done. I've got an update. I have some meetings that I've been, be late getting to. This is on the opening of the clinic. We've got some meetings scheduled first in January. Go ahead and start working the contract out, getting all these other details worked out. That was the reason we stopped it and have been in a hold mode for a while. But I think we'll get this back on track first of the year. Mr. Gass has indicated they were willing to fly in and start going through the details so we can get you a contract before you that's meaningful and have the intended purposes of being a benefit to our employees. This morning, we had an emergency management exercise. Mr. Nash hosted a snow and ice event. You got some phone calls on your phone today, the emergency, and I had to contact the chair and the vice chair to authorize the practice, if you will, the enabling legislation where we would declare a local state of emergency. Good news is that y'all fared real good. I called the chairman and I called the vice chairman. The vice chairman answered in about four minutes and the chairman called while I was on the phone. So we got it all done in under four minutes. So that's a good rating for us in terms of response back of moving on. But it was a lot of information that need to be aware of. The state meteorologists are saying that this is going to be a hard winter. We should expect snow and ice events. And this was a drill of how staff and your emergency management, all your responders would react in an event we have another snow and ice event we've had in the past. We talked about the triggering mechanism. We talked about, you know, what we could expect. Just learning from the past experience and having some sense that the smart people look at weather saying we're going to have an adventurous winter again. You wouldn't know it when it was 75 degrees outside today, but winter's coming. Let me see. Lastly, on the Bonner family, to you and yours and the citizens of Henry County, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to you all. That's all I have. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you so much. Along the lines on the weather, I'm not a meteorologist, but I've already formed an opinion in Henry County that based on all that firewood stacked behind these houses, we are going to have one tough winter. County attorney, you have any comments or anything you'd like to...
I actually do, Mr. Chairman. I've worked with, for and against the county for some 20 years. And for almost all of that time, one of the people I've worked with, for and against the closest is Terry McMichael. And I'd like to embarrass him a little bit more and just tell him that personally, I will miss working with him. I think Terry has always been one of the people working at Henry County that whether you are working with the county or whether you're fighting against the county, Terry has always been one of those people you could go to and get an answer and get a straight answer and disagree with if it's necessary and move on to the next project. And I will miss working with him. I think this organization will miss Terry McMichael's presence. And I want, I want Terry to know that and I want the world to know it. I think, I think Terry's been a great asset to the community. I've worked not quite as close with Chief Lacy because he's managed to keep himself out of the county attorney's office. But I'll miss Chief Lacy as well. I think this, I think it's great to hear that people are able to retire. But I think the county's losing two really good leaders, two really good servants, and I wish them both the best. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Upcoming meeting, January the 5th at 9:00 a.m. is a regular board meeting. January the 19th at 6:30 p.m. is a regular board meeting. Does somebody move that we adjourn in executive session according to with the provision of OCGA 50-14-3 and other laws pertinent to the advice of the county attorney for the purpose of personnel matters only? We have a motion, District 4. Second, District 3. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. We are now going into executive session to discuss personnel issues.